Hear what?
October 30th, regular trustee meeting, first number eight, four twenty-five, and special pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you, please call roll.
Call see roll.
Lucy Gray, your answer. Thank you. Brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is point of comment. For point of comments, we do have a procedure that is called the power share. If anyone would like to make a comment, please come up to the podium and state your personal class name and add your official record. Any comments you want to inform the maximum, and as a matter of standard procedure, the board is not responding to any other non-respective questions being heard in the public conference, but may refer to inquiries to do from your department later as well. With that said, if anyone would like to add to the comment this evening. Thank you, moving on, uh, two minutes. Um, I have a few comments related to the meeting minutes that have been, uh, for the most part, absent from December, uh, forward, December twenty-fourth forward. I did wanna make a comment this evening for the fiscal officer to have some opportunity to respond to, uh, what is provided as section five oh seven dot oh four, the higher revised code, which includes the penalty for fiscal officer shall keep an active record proceeding to the board of township trustees at all its meetings, and all of the counts and transactions, including the acceptance of warrants to township officers. Furthermore, in section B of the same provision, we do have in case in which, uh, rate of vermeida, and any township or the township fiscal officer does not keep township records in a public facility in the board of trustees, once each quarter, and during the request to fiscal officer to provide a board of copies to township records for its review. If the board makes such request, it shall tell the township fiscal officer which records and what's copies of by indicating the dates or types of the record being requested. Uh, with that in mind, I will be requesting of the fiscal office, the accurate board of proof records produced by external agents of quality points, twelve point three, section of board of proof records, twelve point three, eight thirty, board of proof records, one six, twenty twenty-five, board of proof records, one thirteen, twenty twenty-five, board of proof records, one fifteen, twenty twenty-five, board of proof records, one twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, board of proof records, two thirty, twenty twenty-five, board of proof records, two twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, board of proof records, three of this, twenty twenty-five, board of proof records, and three thirteen, twenty twenty-five, board of proof records. Uh, the board created a redline version of draft these running minutes, and provided those to fiscal office as a condition for approval for those standing minutes. And so at this time, I'd like to request the thought of fiscal office to reduce that minutes for the board of proof changes being incorporated into the redline version. Um, the fiscal officer is not present this evening, uh, and he said it's in the call up, and so, um, we'll talk off on maybe creation of a review of section until next meeting. It will also be just direct, just simple, or minor recommendation, or a change of our procedure from approving the next condition of the board, red under changes being made a, um, entry, to wait to approve board name until the changes are needed at the board are out of order. So it's a slight procedural change, but at this time, the board is more after approving the next conditions of changes being made in the meeting hours.
I would like to learn what was asked to prove us that we had to pay good, quick change, and then, uh, the rest being actually, so, that this will also practice to where you keep the permit at all.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, um, unfortunately, the changes that we requested from the board have not integrated, and we simply have to ask this fiscal officer as to jackalism on the changes, uh, of the board, until the changes from the board integrated into meeting minutes, I think this is the best way to resolve it and ask, uh, at this time.
Okay, good, okay.
Great. With that said, there's no meeting running to approve this evening, so we'll continue forward with the agenda. Let's move to roads and cemetery. Actually, we have a guest for those, yes, person. Uh, with, uh, objection related to the law, who are able to, and I hope they will understand what you have to say.
As the law has been playing, forty-nine, story we have been, I thought Chris O'Ryan. I, um, we are here to hopefully, that you will, or be observed in terms of all type needs in that, that township may be, as well as tip costs. I mean, sure, y'all to talk about the need, and also, uh, to explain all the decisions of this, uh, we have, sharing work with the township, so, uh, we think more township for their, for their, uh, heart with township, or why they're doing crossroads, and, uh, for, and, uh, to plan, you know, for the transition for their, you know, services, but we're very, very familiar with a lot of their infrastructure in county, and, uh, we have a lot of knowledge training. I still have enough building experience in, uh, my experience, so, they have, we have a lot of, uh, permanent, uh, very, I end up working around with them, so, with that, um, I, I'm considering, but, um, do you have any questions?
Was, I, I, are you involved in the, uh, business part of that job?
So, I was not involved in that at all, but I was from the lab.
Yeah.
I mean, in the street, I was part of the team, or so, in the business relation expansions, that I need to tell everyone as much, part of that, or part of me, those meetings, those actions at the time.
Uh, was Crossroads involved, and, and with, when you were doing that, money?
Yeah, so, I was not involved in Crossroads at the time, but I believe they did a little bit of consultation, where, finally, you get that again, so, all we had is, you leave that charge, you have a permit, and more around, as you started the company.
Right, okay, yeah, same report, and they, they stated, but, same report, all the working on, so, the whole day, it's maybe, uh, that's also, okay, I don't know, you know, I think definitely, like, commenting for, yeah, um, yeah, well. Um, I was, like, in all this, part of the business part, so, if I, trustee boards, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I was, if you guys wanted to, you want to talk about, so, change, uh, the board, yeah, just call, just try to call.
I mean, I don't know, the, the scope, I've been, I'm, there's a lot of, so, well, uh, we, uh, I don't know, I didn't, it was, yeah, I was, yeah.
You just, oh, yeah.
I don't think we have the, for, to, and, or, people listening, but, yeah, there's a, and, and, uh. You're all, all right. You don't, you don't, yes, it is for us, okay, thank you, um, okay, let's move over with, uh, roads and cemetery department, our considerations.
Okay. Well, yeah, the, the, well, probably was the, all, well, defined, and that's, yeah, work of, of, correct, and, well, what it does.
Appreciate, uh, Mr. Pina, we're going to, uh, have that, both the county and county that, that they, most of the towns to spare that were, to say, we did.
Okay, so, the first resolution for, uh, sure, also, uh, once, once, for, once, for, the, uh, I was, I was, hold, I was, too, uh, maybe, uh, yeah. Uh, yeah, I will make a decision to, uh, go this way, this, uh.
Okay. I understand.
And, and, that's, uh, well, that's, 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 uh, shoot, uh, without, uh, we could, uh, monitor national, national, too, you know, without, without, personnel, as well, hopefully, because, uh, we, uh, so.
Sorry, move on, uh, with your question, please call.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, the, the, uh, the, uh, agenda, the, uh, to, basically, the, uh, to, uh, to, uh, what, uh, this, this, the, the, more than, uh, but, uh, the, the, which is, uh, the railroad, first, uh, most, and, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, asset, uh, the, also, uh, my, uh, first, uh, if you, uh, you, uh, uh, uh.
I, uh, and, uh, in her, with, with.
Uh, 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 all, uh, you got, you, all, uh, uh. Um, you want me to clear, can you hear that, yeah?
Uh, the, my, those are actually, if it's not splash. That we just have you from there.
I know they did a survey, and, and, the, 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 uh, the same, for me, I, I decided on, uh, five, ten down, this, this, okay? I was, I'm wondering, I know, this survey, that we are, for, well, the, there's, uh, now, I don't know, if, again, uh, who that treats, good, uh. It's a, it's a dead tree, that, um, you know, probably, probably, down, so, who inherits it, I guess? But, no, the, so, they, the original survey, they located three, four pounds of, and that's how many terms for the writing was, but shows, and now, will be basically voided because they will split every, every section of alley, like, split, have to go to the , probably, so, we do, because Chris is actually, well, I think, next week, we have our, so we do, is to divide all the alleys, so, you'll have new ends for most of it, but I do not think we provide that, for you, so, like, okay. That's what, I mean, if we have, and, 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 find out who's, this, uh, the, 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 it's, the way it works, is, like, there's a, you know, you know, the, 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 on the north, south, one, the, the thirty feet, breaking, people go, and people goes, you on, there, okay? And then, uh, the, the, you know, the, you know, the, I know, keep having to handle a survey, and, 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 uh, all right, I just, kind of, question, I have, that.
Thank you. Sorry, you come last week?
For, for, as a picture, E, M, A, T, N, E.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, your time.
Okay.
There was another, one, one, really, the, 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 approved, resolution, uh, this, uh.
Twenty-five, and, and, nine, that's, uh.
Um, yeah.
Oh, no, that's, uh.
All, all, uh, cool.
Oh, what?
Resolution, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, we can, leave this, this, uh, uh, representation, that, uh, those, uh, can, first, uh, hold, uh, that, uh, this, uh, so.
Second, move back to, go, stand in front of the chair, for the session, please call. That's your, yes.
Please, please, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. My, uh, 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 with our current service brief, with, uh, strategy of, uh, the, uh, area of current, uh, in, uh, roads, office, and, uh, restaurants, and the, uh, tax, uh, for, uh, this wall, section, so, that, makes, uh, the, uh, most, uh, the most, uh, agree, uh, to, uh, the current service, uh, for, uh, special, uh, services, uh, and, uh, uh.
Sorry, the, uh, for.
Okay, so, for, for, uh, uh, coming to the initial, uh, cleaning, and, uh, so.
Second, uh, the second, by the, the trustee board, second by the chair, of the, uh, previous, uh, amount, experience, twenty-five dollars, this addition of the, of the back office, about a month, uh, for additional eighty dollars, price total, they billed to four hundred and five dollars. Um, one thing of note is, uh, if, uh, issues potentially with the cleaning crews, which crews, two weeks ago, okay, so it's a new, and, 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 we, 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 we have, the, 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 believes, uh, the crew that has been switched to is spending about three times the amount of time here that the previous crew was for the same cost, so we're ensuring that our contract is being fulfilled. Right, so, some of these, uh, effectively, this time, um, that, okay, what is, question? Please call, Lucy Gray?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great, here. Thank you. Yes, yes. Yeah.
Okay, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, two thousand sixteen, uh, this is, uh, and, uh, this is, uh, law, and, 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 it's noted, so, and, uh, uh, this should, uh, go with,
So this is, our appeal, or, is this about, or, resolution?
Yes, so, we did this at the last meeting, for, um, wrong, and Jeff said it would be due since he had not completed the, uh, yet, and, and, replaced, well, so, repeal, and replace, five, eight, one, and then, put it out, and.
Well, this is, uh, is, uh, additional, uh, 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 because of, uh.
What resolution are we on? Five, five, dash, one, five, dash, okay, so, what?
Okay, now, what's the, uh, uh, zero, P, dash, first, uh, Ohio, for not to see, is all the five dollars, somewhere, so, cause, uh, 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 two thousand sixteen, uh, of.
We need to, uh, yeah, uh, this, okay.
All right.
We need to, uh, uh, you know, uh, you know, trust board, like.
Yeah.
Uh, move to, uh, 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 repeal, uh, re, uh, repeal, resolution twenty-five, dash, oh, eight, dash, five, one, and replace with resolution twenty-nine, twenty-five, dash, oh, nine, dash, oh, two, to pay, why, you pay about, you know, five thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars, seventy-one cents.
So.
Move that chair, second, like, trust, the board, discussion, that just, yeah, we are, uh, you're, uh, yeah, do it in the right order, further discussion, please call roll.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, this, uh, for, uh, for each, uh, for, uh, then, uh, for, uh, for, uh, for, uh, this, uh, this is, uh, uh.
Do I want this, 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 more, more?
Well, yeah, we, we, uh, more, more. So, this, this plan is for the, the, uh, four, this, this, our, uh, they're crossing sewer access, um, so, we crossing the sewer, the, the, pump station, actually, just, uh, closure, previous, okay, uh, just north of, uh, very, uh, there, this annex, there's a very, uh, and then, it would be putting in sewer.
Uh, it's. And um. We've put together a sidewalk policy with the uh participation of multiple. To facilitate the repairs. Uh typically what we do would be uh in sections of a sidewalk strip where repairs may uh. The county has uh negotiated a county person contract to repair this side.
Directly.
Now all this just with the contract, the outside of the two years, the country is square up. So you take it out, but um and that contract is negotiated annual. And she was typically by Natasha to do that and then because of township on resident. Uh, we will use possibly more payment or not participate in that program that they have. But uh, there's quite a bit to the sidewalks situation, the sidewalks are on town shares. Property itself is township variable in other cases, but the sidewalks are improvements through a lot of the township by the. So the owner of the sidewalk is the owner of the property like little small. Just just sort of clear off what we make sense and what we've talked about is the vast trying to do the sidewalk. I think most of the place where we provide each of those sidewalks and typically happens with trees. And the roots caused uh a tripwire. And the tripwires involved in the state and the policy was uh several years ago and how most of those were more about. And then they go listen to all the places that they do, the others all the which should be done throughout the township and on the section of section. You got to pull up every year uh section of section mix to. Early program was moving. And there's a lot of this. And that's the reason why we all create the tree line between the sidewalk and street because it manages the street and the sidewalk same with the roots as a preform.
Thank you for that comment. Uh, I do have a little concern with uh. Processing of the payment and who will be responsible in the county. I think there's some cases where that has worked out a little rough um. But there are other cases like the program pairs where there's not a job of processing. They actually wonder what how they would be able to negotiate that. Inch and ring it between the property or in the county.
Hmm, probably because of the care of the doors and also you got to worry about pieces of sidewalk. And uh you can call on what the county's uh negotiated that there for that reach for those pieces of sidewalk that needs to be repaired. And then up to the loan, assuming the loan for paper uh or using the high level of the form paper uh. There's also rest of the law, there goes lots of people's stuff when they call.
So to be clear, we cannot do any run the homeowner pays and we're contracted.
We we.
We did not. Yeah, I haven't been as supportive of us, but I'm not negotiating anything.
So. This is an all fairly important also.
Okay, well, this is a robust thing. Um, so it sounds like we really could do this if we want to implement. The sidewalk policy that was early established and come up with. A game plan and then from the county to negotiate with the third party contractor that need options for the homeowner. I don't think you resolve the question that to be compelled the owner to get the sidewalk repaired irrespective of the fees are. Uh, for lack of better word, township approved, county contract or not.
We can always create the uh power of the like not to do it, uh we could uh do a most efficient and uh. And then uh add to their.
Yeah. Okay, well, for the game and then kind of. When I. Well, approaches. Wonderful. Anything else?
Not for that. I'll get some permission to get back.
Okay, that sounds good. Uh, we have special on the twenty second related to jail board and was there another?
That will be, that will be here for jail board and then also updated the intersection.
Yes.
And uh.
Yes, the only very exciting thing I'm sure. Okay, wonderful. Anything else for?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dean. On to fire.
Yes, good evening. Um, I'd like to provide um just. Some overall highlights, we did uh. Two hundred dollars training um attached to the number um still working through some. Procedural things with the new software. Uh, it's better fun as uh. He's doing well at that and I'll get eighteen annual, annual specials, we did one more exception, we have fifty four. So.
Wonderful. Uh.
Just high level reading.
Yes, thank you. I hope we did receive your input. Good. I appreciate you providing the questions about.
Uh, the.
Thank our thought work. Spin stuff back.
Okay, uh, do you want to bring a little bit of course from before and how to do uh the requisition that then you can. Usually the like test you Brian and requisition.
Yeah. Oh, I will. I will read them out of the uh. So the first condition I have is two zero five zero five six, it'll be worth a dollar, uh seven, seven, eight, and the amount of two hundred and seventy nine thousand seven hundred. I'm sorry, the amount of three hundred and forty five thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty five thousand, seven hundred and twenty five dollars. Uh, with an expected cost of two hundred and seventy nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty one dollars for it wasn't our last team to work at by chance. This vehicle was uh slated on a replacement plan um included in your copy as well for replacement next year. The vehicle will take twelve months to build, the expenditure will actually happen in two thousand twenty six, but we need to get on the stick now. So uh this replaces utility truck. Uh, the two thousand three Ford F uh two fifty we have would be uh kind of work bad on it. Um, that truck is sure of our our country parallel. Uh, however, it's be kind of passive, it really wasn't designed for it. So this truck will absolutely uh fix that problem more perfectly than it will be.
Quick question, could we?
Uh, on the contract sign and whatnot, you can cover the money, uh however you want to cover it later, purchase order can wait till uh delivered, won't pay for it till delivered the vehicle, which will be. Have it since twelve months from. Essentially how the uh week is pretty full, we actually get in there scheduled.
Uh, do you want to update the time?
Yes, that would be, that would be for. Provide the possible solutions.
Uh, move to approval of twenty two twenty twenty five dash oh five six, data request nine and eight to uh Rose Tower Rescue Board five eight chassis. And the amount was three hundred thirty five thousand, seven hundred twenty five thousand twenty cents and authorized trustee rail to uh execute all documents associated in.
So.
Move by the chair secondly, trust board discussion. Please call roll. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, sorry, Mr. President. Um, my representation I have is is your five that serve five seven two O H B L L O P uh for the purchase of a uh test for for our work creators, our S U V A's. Uh, you're required to need annual fit testing and this will help uh probably share. Test with a number of other departments in the county. We get this about thirty days a year and that seems to coincide with our hiring. So um we did apply for the grant. This early during the year was denied, so I'd like to move ahead for purchase and it will be in the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred forty four dollars. Um, that's a total cost, there's no incidents.
So move the approval of for position twenty five twenty twenty five dash oh five seven dated ninety twenty five.
So.
Move by the chair secondly, trust board discussion. This is.
Yeah.
Um, if yours is five that's five eight, it's our show, Chris, we're God, King Ram, uh double Ohio reversal two thousand and four dollars for animal pursuit uh. Any amount of maybe nine thousand, three hundred twenty dollars with anticipated costs of three nine thousand, four hundred and thirty five dollars. Um, this will be, as you know, um, we're be uh going to assistant chief and this will be a vehicle that will uh a lot of the vehicle while uh for use while on duty.
Can we finish this answer?
It's our show, uh, state that it's our show. I can say it's a light, but I know the show.
No.
That it's state here.
Yeah.
They're they're on the state here document.
As it's that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have a question?
Well, the council would.
It is state here. It is a state that.
What a lot of.
No, it's actually a lot. It's available. It's not a, it's not a.
He's asking if we can go through state, but we get it better.
Now, newer ones are are more expensive type. So we bought it off a lot when we knew it gave it any less expensive.
Rebaits.
Yeah.
Still the world.
Yes. Yeah, it's never, it's not a used vehicle. It's a new, it's a new vehicle, it's definitely bought before, so it has all the old factors you want to.
What happened?
Wait.
Okay. Any other? Move to twenty five dash oh left eight eight and nine, any purposes of purchasing uh twenty four God straight in pursuit to be watched by the assistant chief. In the amount of fifty nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, well, so.
Yeah.
Remember, we've done shared something about with the board discussion.
There's a purchase agreement on the second page that somebody we authorized to sign.
Good.
Yeah. Well, that may be.
Other rest trusty board actually executed up to associate with our position marriage.
I have no problem with that. I'll second that. But the question is, we have already.
Uh, it's not necessary. Um, because maybe something. Maybe going for a better. No. Yeah, and anyways. You know, please call.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, actually, we'll be two five dash zero five nine, two long sign of uh in a amount of fifteen thirds of ten dollars. Expected amount of three thousand dollars for that would be graphics um lettering, striking, all that sort of stuff.
We need to discuss what it's going to look like. I wonder if us, the chief and I'd be able to work on that and finalize. No, there's not, not at this point. You'll bring finalized as going to. Work for consideration. We can talk about that. Okay. Thank you.
I would, I would prefer it looks like the rest of the fleet rather than the current vehicles or like recent vehicles than fire vehicles. Um, they will be striking away than like the rest of the fleet red white.
Be using it in a high watts.
As a fire. Um, you know, red, white, blue and green don't really go together a lot also.
Yeah, but township logo, what what anything we represent.
And see if we can work that. We'll see what we can do.
Move to for your position twenty twenty five dash oh five nine eight eight, appropriate amount not to exceed. Three thousand five hundred dollars for purposes of graphics more than framing for this is fire.
So.
Move by the chair secondly, trust board discussion. Please call roll. Surely, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, next one is two zero five back here six zero, this is two J D Johnson service, removals, camping, gringles, light sirens, radios. Um, all of those sorts of things that will be put into it and might not exceed um eighteen thousand dollars with an expected cost of uh fifteen thousand dollars or less. And my top exceed um eighteen thousand dollars with an expected cost of uh fifteen thousand dollars or less. I did receive a call from them over the weekend. There's uh after the last map. Little more can cover the cost.
So may I approve your position? Five six oh taken nine eight. Not exceed the amount of eighty thousand dollars. First emergency that looking for the. Move by the chair second by trusty board discussion. The goal. Yes.
Uh, next will be two three five that's six one four months promotions. Um, and amount one you can see four thousand one dollars and twenty nine cents. Uh. For fire prevention supplies for the year. Uh, come in fire season. Um, going house, school events, those type of things. And I had a list. No, we'll be that later. That'll that'll be later. Not not tonight.
Okay. Let's not have.
Oh, no, we're not. I promise.
All on.
Yeah, these are all.
Okay.
I mean, it could be.
Move to approve our position twenty twenty five dash oh six one eight nine. Not exceed another four thousand fifty one dollars and twenty nine cents. The purposes of fire prevention supplies that are not intended to be edible. Thanks. Can we might share something about trustee bowler discussion? Please go. Yes.
Yeah. And lots of man pages is uh two zero five zero six two for non-organization. Spending in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and five dollars. Four cents with the list of.
Move to approve our position twenty twenty five six two dated nine eight zero twenty five for the. Total amount of one thousand twenty five dollars. Four cents for now in the position and credit for the fire. Move by the chair second by trusty board discussion. Please go. Kathy floor.
Good.
Kathy Graham. Hey, all the requisitions.
Done, thank you.
Wonderful. Uh, bring us your next item to fire chief by Friday. So the first one is to a resolution to appoint Todd majors as assistant fire chief. We uh Mr. Majors and and out of United spell that he would be one of the officials. Right, a reservation memorial. Off of your front. And um, see. The amount is only the effective date. Access or. We're uh we're not. Then hold on here. Okay, move to approve uh resolution number twenty five national nine national one. The resolution of taking Todd majors as assistant fire chief for the effective date of October fourteen. Subjects quality and parts and conditions within the day. Resolution contained therein for the paid tower amount of ninety nine thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
Move by the second by trusty board discussion.
So I think I'm. Whatever the right will make to uh. Or she uh the uh tell me to brush her.
Thank you. Really, we're approved of the recommendation. We have. Watch for this. Further discussion. Please go. Kathy floor.
Yes.
Yes. We already have. At. So I'm gonna do the quick test. Just the part twenty five dash nine dash oh one two. Is that right? Okay. This resolution is to appoint James Spencer as a primary. Who initially be assigned to the role of position. This will be to backfill James created by a. Conlight's promotion. So this is a promotion that James can be a part of that. With the. Nice. Day that I would. Is there? The. Uh, knowledge. In here. And just to.
Yeah. Whatever. These step one is to get a questionnaire. Where you can collect marketing. Yeah.
I can see.
Yep. And that's all of it. Number two.
Doesn't.
That. Just uh. We've got the. I don't know. I just. At the. Turned by the fire. Uh, tell me. So it's. So. Pretty well. Problem. Okay.
I will. I can refer with David. And we can do that. He has been assisting of the resolutions. So I'm not sure if we discussed their. For future. I don't. I don't think it's necessary. Uh, something that's very limited in the resolutions to have a concrete start date. I will. Yeah, that's true. In the meantime, you're probably well asking us this. To be that. May may be altered or whatever. Yeah. Move to our position. We've had to explain that that was one two. Uh, on the recommendation of the fire chief and uh actually the administrator of the James Center. It's a full time firefighter beginning September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, oh, hours. In a lot of years with the uh step. CBA. Urban agreement divided. I have. Move by. The trusty board.
Yeah. And the last whole. Excuse me again. Uh, Captain Meadows will complete his probation. Uh, tomorrow, September ninth, ten by five. We've done exemplary job and it's all staff in their probation. I see no need to extend this probation. Ruby Meyer communication and Captain Meadows removed probation. That's zero eight hundred. On September eleventh, two thousand and five, we need to start a new ship. And move to step two, captain, move this new rate to twenty four dollars and fifty five cents per hour.
So move by chair. Move by the chair second by trusty bowler. Discussion. Right here then. Congratulations to Captain.
I will send them.
Please go. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sure, yeah.
I'll. First of all. Give her this.
No issue. No issue.
That's what I would do. Superb. Somewhere.
That unless you say it's a school, I'm I believe that uh I I've never experienced. My tenure began here um last August, so I can't identify what it is. Uh, there is not an. Order in the building once a hour, so I'm assuming whatever you. Believe it to be is to be right.
Okay. Something we used to do in the past. Versus uh. Fire. Close. Or.
Hydrants.
Hydrants. And that was all. There. Counsel. Do not have. Submit. Suspicious water. We got. Not. Suspicious. Our.
I'd be insulted with uh with. Delca on that. City where. Water. And no fire. Yeah. I'm sure there are um there are no places. Council have. You know, some fire hydrant access is not every five hundred feet of our. Most of our liquids have. So I'd have to stop that with the water. You were in spot. We uh. Well, the first. I know. Do that. I've heard. I've heard. And then. Three. Uh, three. Our most. He should. To uh make it possible to. Have water. We need water. Yeah. Uh, cause. The more fire hydrants we get, the better off. Off this. All right, so rating uh. Is um kind of hinges on, you know, being within a thousand. Get credible waters. So. Credible waters either fire hydrant or dry hydrant. So if we can get more hydrants out there, I'm all for it. I'll 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 look into it. And I'd say this certain thing I'm all for to. Based on. Well, put it in places where we get suspicious logs. Proxies, fires and that sort of thing. But or not. Because like. That sort of thing. And the one. Chang. One. Yeah, and certainly. Interest opportunity would be to find it. Go north on the. Black Hills. Uh, when they start putting that in New York. To purchase hydrants for lack of. Um. Because it'll be more. Um, I'll just all the down code on that program. Yeah. All that. Excuse me. Um. Not. I'm not really good at all.
True you do.
Yeah. Uh, well, this is like. You know, maybe. Anywhere. Yeah. Yes, sir. All. So I don't know. Just want to make sure. Sure thing. I will uh do on my list.
And uh. The other. Too much. Uh. The place.
We started the conversation um. Oh, I'll have to. About started this conversation. Motive is. Started to show age. It's almost twenty years old now, so they're starting to show age. And we're starting to have a little bit of a convenient issue. Um, just out of service for about a week. Um. How to spend a day. I think one of the biggest problems is that motive is gone there. Um, you know, we have to send it to Indian Lake to work on, so. We can't have a money look. But. Or the season. Others. Uh, we are starting a conversation. More important.
More. For that. So. Those three.
Well, to help. Well, try to. Just start, thank you. Appreciate it.
Soft and fire.
Good.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, that's from this zoning into our next item. The agenda, which is the agreement professional technical services with crossroads entity planning. We've already been introduced. Thank you for sending through. Uh, a lot of your tools that get on the items. Um, so we have before us the agreement. And administrative manager will have provided a summary of how this uh person who we have. Yeah, but yes, so we have. I've checked with Jen Huber. I raised this for Jen. And she had concerns about it. We started a conversation across the. I tried to look at our economic development. Let's look over paperwork, but uh. But we don't necessarily. And so. Yeah. And. And so looking at this with the service is we started with economic development. However, in the meantime, having expanded scope to include stunning strip classes, we continue to start. For example. So in the agreement will say that. Currently, the agreement states that they would charge five dollars an hour for thirty hours of work. Anything after that, we can go at an hourly rate. And so that would. One of the hours. Um, but more if you. So it is zoning. But it's just. He's. While they're also looking for a agreement that's recognized. The economic development incentive agreement. You will not take a substantial amount of time for once to place. Being also. And. Will you? Uh.
Oh, well.
Quest. The board. Is so. So there's. His parents here. They are. So yeah. There are people on this side of the information like that. There's. Okay, so the scope of this initial discussion was tips that economic development. And you uh feel that this one time you pass as fire summary director. That the you're confident in that capabilities passing expand those services, but we're going to prioritize zoning. For now, and then if it's. Yes, if they're able to. At the same time, not to create, but we know that we need more as they need is. Yeah. Okay, so um. It says crossroads only. Name of the project official is a lot. Everything. Present or other. We're not officially employed. Pointed by the town chief of West. But it may be official. Um. So that my here. I'm ready to try. They'll talk to anybody. Or. They'll talk with you. They will talk with Jerry. They will talk with Cindy. Yes, and I'm gonna have them talk with any any other township in the way, or is that related? At the stone. The scope right now. Like answers. And if I do. Um, whoever you direct. Crossroads off to you. So you do want to take those resident practitioners or the right hand that have. We will. That there are certain times where. The administrator will tackle it rather than communication. So one of the points where the people talk to who are. Yeah, and and saying you're you're willing to attend the meetings. Oh, yes. Yeah, so. So just kind of situating it out. Um. If they said that it's only the beginning, it would still want Jerry building questions typically the last. But then they're hoping to interest or like. By you to. Okay, it's more of a conversation. Okay, we got this question. How do you want to? Yeah. Perfect. The one thing. That I'm just kind of conscientious of, which are you guys. Is um. Having like. And following meetings. And making sense that, you know. maybe sort of that, if that does comment, that is documented in detail, um, if necessary at all, I'm not sure there will be, right, even.
I'm sure.
Okay, I'm going to cover one more. Right, fantastic. Okay, uh,
Yeah.
Need, uh, notion and agree on that. And for creative ones, and empower, authorize, uh, trust, uh, how to administer your tax, be also.
No.
I will request these fifteen thousand that would give us three months for also giving possibility to go with a lot of not that far, being managed beyond forty hours. Yeah, we'd be able to that without immediately.
You want to pick up, is it, most, do, will, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, that's true. You want to make a job?
Uh?
Future for fifteen thousand dollars. Okay, future for fifteen thousand dollars, parent agreement with, uh, Crossroads, Canadian Planning for the purposes of economic development and, uh, zoning support. And authorize administrator, he'll execute all documents associated with that. Got everyone?
Uh, I believe those create, you know, how to go into the operation, or at least, correct, everything, well, that.
That's it, uh, yeah.
Okay, all correct.
Yeah. We might, yeah, like, the trusty holder, yeah, this question, yeah, and what you have, it's the only thing is just maybe certain that, um, maybe certain that you have to go over, because then we are paying for our assistance, my.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, any other questions? Please call. Yes, uh, can you sign it?
I can't.
Thank you, you're welcome. Probably, uh, um, Um, okay, um, so, we have any questions? Next, we're zoning is we have the zoning inspector who will provide the house, this is what I bought. Uh, Jerry Malachi continues to do an excellent job, building in as the assistant zoning, uh, inspector. And the report is probably, uh, of note for new home permits. We are at one hundred and thirty-three new home permits for this year. Uh, last year, we exceeded that to three hundred and sixty, which looks like a new permits are going value in the number and more, of course, probably prior to the years before that. Last year, we had three or four, and I remember the level of, um, other significant subdivisions, um, uh, which has our requirements to be nearly double last year. Any questions that I can, um, is that a, that we have?
No. Four, hard, uh, to solve, uh, yeah, uh, two, uh, two.
Yeah. Let's be. I think so, unless it's the other major, but it was, it was.
Most, uh, there's, well, uh, yeah, the new problem, well, uh, you.
Anything else? Okay, and that's all I have done. Is there any customers done? I don't, I don't have anything. Thank you also. Yes, great. Okay, first of all, it's right, name of this.
Okay, one, we have, um, the new report that we need to, yeah, that's my, they have, we have published, and we showed you, um,
And a lot of questions that we have often pertaining to use of the zoning aspects. So just something of consideration to do as you. Did you have any follow up questions for this? Mr. Stigall?
No.
Pretty straightforward. Administrator, any questions or concerns? Move to the group representation. And oh nine dash oh one, any amount of twenty nine hundred to revise the verses of the AI check law.
Okay.
Hey, nine.
Sure.
Move to the legislature, more discussion.
Who's ready to solve?
Revise. Our website.
So.
Yes.
Who's come? That is.
Okay. She's been.
Just there.
Hey, any questions? Please call. Definitely clear?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry. Maybe not the resolution. Yes, let's do this. Okay. Uh. Hold on with a resolution. Okay, uh, people are making time to review the resolution. Is there anything? That you would like to? Discuss or approve or motion?
No, no.
Move to the representation twenty five dash nine dash one six, declaration of the office township trustee. Whereas correcting twelve one September twenty five, writing on this township trustee, our township. The Lord Calia, by the time commence of January first twenty two, expiring September first twenty twenty five. And whereas the result of such resignation office for rolling township trustee, are the obligation to be made. Therefore, maybe result of the board of directors and deans, the force at office township trustee for rolling township. The force at office township trustee for rolling township. For like any volume, time commence of January first twenty two, expiring September first twenty five. Time commence of January first twenty two, expiring September first twenty five. If it has a role on September first twenty twenty five. If it has a role on September first twenty twenty five. Uh, any, any being the result of the resignation. Uh, any, any being the result of the resignation.
Sure. Sure.
Move to the second discussion. Move to the second discussion. Please call. Please call. Definitely real. Definitely real. Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey. Hey.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, we have a point for our long, how much time for your position now? All right, we have a point for our long, how much time for your position now? It is. It is. So. So. Yep. Yep. Okay. Okay. Then this, you have really need to do so that it does necessary, okay? Then this, you have really need to do so that it does necessary, okay? Uh, move to resource and to executive session, regular session. Uh, move to resource and to executive session, regular session. So of course, one hundred and one dot to 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 consider the employment, employment dismissal of this kind of promotion conversation. So of course, one hundred and one dot to 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 consider the employment, employment dismissal of this kind of promotion conversation.
Sure. Sure.
Move back to the last two more. Move back to the last two more. Please call. Please call. Definitely real. Definitely real. Yes. Yes. You can hear now. You can hear now.
Second, we have just the order to set up an advisory chair discussion. Please go over.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the board of trustees did make a executive session. Uh, no decisions were made and no actions were taken. Um, at this time, I would like to transition to our date, time, certainly eight AM. And, uh, open the case for hearing, CC case sixteen dash oh, and then three. And, uh, to him, we got the question, you guys want to?
Um, get here, do that. All right. Very long, very short. We're going to go, uh, title to the conference. To the next one.
And we have a short representative, we were with brush, awesome. Yes. Wonderful. Uh, we are thinking on through the initial presentation. And so this is continuing. Uh, and the outstanding events.
Yes. Um, last meeting, uh, we will all be talking in the evening, sure. We got the overall, now, let's go right, go right to those points that you want to address. Um, exactly. And we toppled down the forty.
Pretty. Well, we got, actually, our, yes, true. We're going to go sanctuary, super fifty, comes out with the most positive. Um, I think this is really where we started last, last meeting. And they tried various proposals in our board, and it was the tradition that we had made to the plan, something. Um, the, we know that the, uh, smaller lots in the issue and the, the small ones, they just said smaller. And then the impact of the barrage on the smaller areas. We, we really worked on how we got those ways to mitigate the impacts of that. And to provide some standards that help those types of leaders continue to be a part of Evans Farm, where I am currently chair of the office today. Uh, what we know about that is we able to change the legal style plan, ultimately, introducing curvatures for the roads, minimizing straight lines, turning the locks, regourenings on the streets that are not such a. Uh. Okay, the board of commissioners did make a second discussion, no decisions were made and no actions were taken. At this time, I would like to transition to our date, time, certainly eight AM. And open the case for hearing, CC case sixteen dash oh, and then three. And uh. To him, we got the question, any guys want to?
Um, get here, do that. Very long, but. We're going to go. Time to run the comments.
And we have a short representative. You were with. Awesome. That wonderful, uh, we already got through the initial presentation. And so this. And the outstanding. Um, Evans.
Yes. Last meeting, uh, we were all talking. Sure. We got the call now. Right. Go right to those points you want to address. Exactly. And we toppled down.
Pretty. Well, we got. For sure. We're going to go straight through fifty. One's hard to do twelve to five. Um. I think this is really where we started last, last meeting and. They tried various plans on this in a war and it was the tradition that we had made. The plan, something. Um, the, we know that the uh. Small lots in the issue and the. The small ones, they just said smaller, um, and then the impact of the garage on the smaller. So we. We really worked on how we got those ways to mitigate the impacts of that. And to provide some standards that help those types of leaders continue. To be a part of Evans Farm, Brian, Eric, and all these things. Uh. What we dealt about is we able to change the legal style plan, ultimately. Introducing curvatures to the roads, minimizing street lines, turning some blocks, regourenings on the streets that are not such. Uh, with some repetitive nature in the. In the block structure. We talked about some architectural commitments relative to garage. Specifically, carriage style doors, garage doors. How we can architectally details to minimize the huge use of color combinations in the house, especially in multi-color. Um, using trim colors or perhaps the torch. Uh, some architectural detailing elements relative to. Uh. Overhand these trellises or something over the garage that can reduce down. Um. I think some of the other incentives that we heard at that hearing, um, that would. Maybe some lines to be, uh, some heights and edges to drive away to them. And then when we address there's no way we're. Or we call or have updated on this information. Um, and then what we ended up is updating our two blocks. What we want really to change the test. The last version it was all really a, a summary of changes. Or we were asking for changes from the original group, uh, development test. What we have provided is the original, what we're waiting to try to develop as an entire, as a development. And we introduced a second specific to the north. Um. North section of Evans Farm, a second developer standard, a subsection. And in that subsection, also the top line of the records are different from the standard, um, development standard. So we will go through those.
And just, sorry, just for clarification from the document you're referencing, you are referencing. The one provided online to twenty two.
Yes.
So you're going to take us through a specific changes that we requested where exactly.
So here, the changes to, to the same, the additional commitments. The inclusion of the uh. The uh. The government in force right now, that's all. Um, the other thing here was you want to understand what's seen. As, as this, um, section department had to pass the law to change from the original. So we provided an appendix of both of the two, which is about seventeen per week past three. It contains what we believe we updated, what would represent an updated development plan. Based on laws that grew back from sixteen. Plus all the changes along the way, what we look like. We included the original with the roofed out plan as part of that text. And then what we provided is a side by side comparison of overall Evans Farm. And then I'll walk you through each of those to show you what is in, what is in the basically. We're still going to be accounting for open space and and lock-ins and workplaces on site. Um. So are there any questions or any comment you need to. Or somehow how it will be addressed differently, I'll also just.
Precisely, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. So last time we were, we talked about, um. Your road goals. Um, and again, some of the next, we're relating relative to, um. Carriage dialogue or upgrades, level connection, course. We, we, uh, talked about going to windows, you know. I will point out to this area that I'm talking about, we will meet fifty three. Um, and it's highlighted in yellow. We think one step. And it is. I want to explain to you, you can read it on page forty nine. Starting about four, moving down from the top. There's a, there's a lot of different. This, that whole new section is going to be a subsection of the regular architectural standards for newer discussion of Evans Farm. And so the base for this was a base, Evans Farm standards. And anything new that we develop is where it's different than that. And that includes all commitments that we've made previously to the last meeting. Um, and a lot of these concepts, I think, exactly included in the approval of our side as well. Relative to permitted materials, combinations, limitations on the process. I'm just kind of holding this thing down very importantly. So above the standard, Evans Farm text, we have a section of architecture. Where we. Do regularly. How many revelations do we need across the strip for either side of this other. Back on, um, that's very similar to the everybody. Um. We define the front stall of the law. Uh, that definition wasn't here, which told, so now the text approved the definition and said the front stall is defined as a front of porch. Those are both. Um, on page fifty one. There's a, there's a little section about doors and what type, what the. Um, on page thirty two. Uh, there are, there are two settings there that, um, were included in the part of the law that. Relative to similar on windows and their style and character. And then being defined as a, as a acceptable type of window. Um, and then also include the. For a definition of what are permitted window construction. And that would put on a whiteboard, aluminum whiteboard, sure, tell the PC and solve these here. So on page fifty three. This is literally. To dial up. Of last meeting. Um, and what we. So what we did was we also, um. What we committed to work with, kind of turn it into this. It deals with our street facing garages. Um. I don't know if you're aware of what some of the additional. Facing garages on a front, like, which is shallow and wide on the stairs. Garage door shop. Such as carriage style doors. Solid black. But that's not part of the actual character, something that contributes to its size. Number two, all the ones which I would do that, because we think that's something that adds character to the. I'm going to go on to the next consideration of designing elements that really improve it and. To help enhance. Um, it's included as a surety as well. All area design. But we will follow through that. So some of these things that we're considering and, um. Up the bit, the, the. You know, if. Painting your garage similar or the same color as what the volume of. Helps that air puzzle go away, it doesn't bring it. Um. Architectural elements, I'm talking about struts, overhangs, um. Reseism, something that gives some depth. Or shadow line, over叨叨, garage door should be considered. Also, we talked about like, cares how they should be considered where, where. Um. I do want to introduce right now two additional commits. Um, and that deals with. The percentage of the renovation that happened. And also deals with the setback of the glass. And so what I was.
Let's get it. Does he like?
Absolutely.
And sorry, it's just, it's sometimes easier to mean it's all.
So these are the commitments that we, uh, on page thirty. The one we kind of made of six, three, basically, garage from a renovation shop. Falls there and we want to. Rent for the floor. And they are such garage doors, street facing garage doors. Shiny wood, fifty two percent of the land of the renovation. And just to be accurate, when we get that confirmation on. Our product was done in. It has been like fifty one. Uh, percent. So we commit fifty two percent. Um. I mean, it's almost something last meeting, around fifty percent. Some of the industrial processes, it's. That room was about six inches across the start of that house. So fifty two percent of it's going to. No, all products that we shouldn't. So that would be the maximum. The second point, uh, number four, that we're going to do. Is for home designs, the front elevation of us. And that was a lot of. Um, they said that we need to. This is your. It would be a lot less. What is it that shows is. Is, um. And it probably wasn't clear to our expectations, but. We also have, in addition to the loss that. We also have a loss. To the people who want that's for a forty foot wide. Those larger lots, forty one of them. They're the, they're the, uh. The dream already. So what that means is we're going to have a lot of. Hundred forty two of that very. And so I think for this next minute, I was going to play, keep that in the back of your mind. So for home design, the front of the actual lesson. Something on forty foot or lots of, as a strong plan. A minimum of seventy seven homes kind of limited designs. Where the garage door, front facing, you not protect the door of front. So the garage door. And it may flush in seventy percent. Of those. Home designs. And that's what the most high under the. We all across.
Just to. The garage door, front door will be flushed. And therefore, the front porch will be the only thing that's facing forward.
The front porch will be proud of every. Forty nine.
And that's.
Seventy percent of the lots there. Or or pots in a lot would be, my opinion is ninety. Just ask me. We want that percentage because, yeah, we may have less. So.
Less what? Did I hear less?
I'm just saying, I forget it. I mean, forty percent, yes. Because I don't. We have. We're permitted, kind of.
Yeah, and you're. Committing to the less percentage.
We're committed to seventy percent of the homes that are forty foot or less. So the. Minimum. So you're talking over eighty three, ninety five.
We have extended the hundred.
We did, we always test that, remember, open big plan. Or not moving a lot of the house. Let me get.
All right.
Go ahead, this is exciting. Do. We can let you guys.
So, uh, and, and then for the smaller lots. I don't think I understood, it didn't sound like anything from before changed as far as. The length of the garage to the porch, I think that we were at fifty two or fifty one last time. So clarify, like, what that didn't mean to you for. Does it seem to be that anything changed from before?
Not, it's, it's, it's a certain calculation, so other wash.
Yeah, we did that, we're saying, we did that calculation, realized together. And it was the same percentage, so it doesn't seem that the percentage has changed.
It has. We're. To commit fifty two percent of that front side.
But that's what it was before, that's what.
It wasn't.
Well, when you did the validate product together, was that what we wanted to change, right?
It certainly wants to change in my. On the.
Right, that was still a problem last time for me, so I was saying, writing is different from what we. Like, I, I was trying to.
Well, well, that, that is, that, you know, it's. Are for, you know, any smaller. That's what it means, if it can't be.
Was there any? Is there any product that we were looking at before that was smaller?
There's not. That's it, for me, it's smaller, that's all I can just, just do.
That's weird.
Okay, so it's the same thing that you walked us through, what. You're saying won't be smaller. Okay.
Won't be smaller. If we got. And that was all.
Yeah, that really amounted to that, because there was no product that was that, it wasn't installed in the first place. And this is what we already established, it just kind of feels like, and that's why I didn't want to do more of that. But the thing that I was taking exception to was the percentage of the house being over fifty percent garage, because the house.
Is. Six inches. It's in, it's in. It's in, in my mind, when you look at how they, it's.
Six. But we want, we all. And you're saying it's.
All right. I'm not making.
I'm sorry.
I'm not getting on myself, I'm doing. All right. Okay, so we have three and four. Good, all right.
Um, page fifty four includes a lot of, um. A lot of commitments that were made relative to collars. Um, it also includes the, um, forty six mil vinyl siding. Um. It, it also, um. Perpetually using vinyl siding on.
Which is only for track lots that are on the area.
It's all front side.
And you define solid as.
Or, um. The first block driving the. It normally turns from side to the higher, uh, front of the house.
I, I figured beyond that, I thought, I thought you said the front side was the. Front porch, uh, that's what.
That is another regarding solid that we're. Forward.
Okay, but that's.
We can make it. Architectural.
But yeah, but, but I read it, front porch, I thought, okay, so you're just committing to. Then it's like, do that, you have like a final one of a garage. Now.
Natural hurdles. Including some minimal, uh, or not minimal, but misthiring.
And if your technicality is, you're avoiding the percentage. Over. And you. I believe all the whole stack that we grew, we will average. No more than fifty percent of the garage door, the. Matched with the. It's going to be less. Less, well, that's.
Yes, that's correct. Did the zoning inspector, uh, send you, uh. Did the zoning inspector, uh, send you, um, like questions?
He he mentioned that you, well, he brought fifty percent.
Yeah, oh, oh, yeah, I mean, everyone in the society, minus.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, we're here on the bills, courses.
We were talking about that, yeah, absolutely. Um, I have a personal about saving, saving your property, and I think our position is saving is definitely. However. All our homes are designed by the authorities, there is one of the authorities here. Who carry law enforcement, so state of Ohio. Who are really, really, highly knowledgeable. Who sets safety containers, and that's what we have to do. We have to do those regulations that I stated. Uh, that's more like safety stairs or structures, anything that that own architecture really. Has to be minimal security requirements. And then along that, our home builder, all of the, the recommended installation of the complex, you use a five year. Crime site, the headquarters, that is, that's we rate one hundred and sixty-eight miles.
And and then we did rest just a little while we did the roper. It was, and it was important, yeah, it was caring about how it was clawed. And that made sure that the installation was clawed to certain lengths, so I mean, that's. Do it in order, in order, you know, over, everything has been installed, or maybe you're manufacturing just the kitchen, it's absolutely great, uh, this is the awesome house.
Are you aware of, um, a stairwell, or a place, or an proximity or?
The wind.
Yeah. Are you aware of the habit that have in the county to walk in, you have any concern with me?
I don't know, personally, where.
So, yeah, rather than if wind safety concerns are a question. And the question that I posed was another question, is I don't say the house, the question was, in the preliminary development plan, no block was many permitted. And now you're asking, trying to something to be ready. And my thought is, why should now allow one sided, we did not before, it would be less safe to use that stuff. And I was hoping that you could answer from general comment that's made. But that was a question, because where I mean, is the end product is less safe, then will be approved, and I'm there to go again. And that is, is, uh. I think a little less interactive, I I don't know.
I think it's a. From the, 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 the design. Um, would this be that?
Okay, well, then, data, that's what I asked for, would you guys provide me with the best data, vinyl setting is safer than natural stone, or maybe the.
I mean, that, that.
But that's the, that's the question, I said, you know, and this night, I really actually wanted to hear your answer.
Well, we.
And if you just tell me, you said, save the assumption, but then, that's what you said.
Well, just from this, it's out, it is within that, behind that, but it is a student.
I would think that you guys provide data, evidence to suggest that. My question would be answered, and that I would prefer that switching to vinyl siding. You, we can now be assured that the product is as safe as if a natural stone material was approved in preliminary plan.
When it's lost, with the under receiving, I'll, I'll, we, um, control, and then it's applied, and that just like we did in practice.
Yeah, but, well, then, frankly, you can ram off, you didn't.
Well, it's a, it's a, which we really, we approve, I'm just, I'm trying to answer you.
I did a card, but I was still as much in advance, like it's. Is there a, is there a real one that could, or that could.
We can, that is, the, 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 I mean, you can add these specifications, and just say how it's really installed, and how you shoot that one really. Because that's, that's not a trip.
That's compared to other products, so that we can see a side side comparison.
Well, we could, I don't know, then, you know, stainless steel or concrete or something, too.
Yeah, but we're not talking about, that was, that idea very important to have, that was. That's true, but it, it, it for no buying, and I mean, and how we're talking about changing it. To your point, those are so proven, proved, and why we're having that conversation.
I would, I would, I'm the final one, I told him, that's the.
Vinyl was not approved, which I was.
I understand, not because it wasn't safe. It was because it was where we worked, kind of the architecture application that we're doing, or building.
That might be why you guys did this for, but that might not have been why the trustees voted on it.
One of the trustees.
That would be the trustee's time to do it, but here's what we are. Here's what we are saying, today, I'm a trustee, trustee voted trustee. And we're asking a question, because we have a seeming concern about vinyls and rock floor. And I sent this question in advance, and I was hoping that you guys have evidence, data, something to support the fact that you can say that the vinyl siding is as safe. As the natural stone material was preliminary, that was a preliminary plan, otherwise, I don't, okay, that's fine, you know. I think, frankly, taking stories for.
I would have quoted research on the installation, we can't just, we get on the, on the method of installation, and getting to us, the wind is just a hundred and sixty-eight miles an hour. Important to me, the answer to that was, I didn't, I didn't know, other than answering the question, having the research, to make sure that it was standing at a hundred and sixty-eight mile per hour wind. Which we will lot head up here. Um.
That's actually not true, that's why I brought it in, back a year or two ago. As we did, as we had any effort, it destroyed, it didn't last as soon as.
Right, I don't, I don't, I don't remember anything, I think we were talking about those places being go past, or done with the rating, we have that. Hundred and sixty mile per hour wind, is definitely something that is safer, just as safe as any other, and and I would. One, ten, or maybe somewhere around here, so I mean.
Right.
We don't, we don't, and more than saying that, because the trust, right, and really, that's what we're done, and we're just at.
So I, I'm not asking about your thing, I'm asking about, was it approved in the preliminary, and and why it should allow vinyl siding now, and that was, that wasn't approved before. And I'm, I'm just, I ask for something to be.
Right, and saving is, is a, no question, maybe better, as we definitely don't have to create it as often, we are saving it through, or the strategy, however, we did LP side, getting away from these. But but this is a hundred and sixty-eight miles an hour, being applied, is fifty-six, LP siding, at that level.
Okay, can you please submit something for us, if you know, if you want that, that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
That would be fantastic. Okay, so, final, anything else on final that you think could drop here?
What is it?
All right.
My, 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 my. It's one of the, we want to. Yeah, is it, is it, is it a lot of, I, I, I was, I was, when, oh, or six, is finally reported in our early, as well, or maybe purely saving, because it's taken inside. Now, I, I would, yes, one of those, uh, it's, I'm, uh, I'm.
Is what you're indicating, that we have residents, provided, therefore, we must allow, provide, for our system?
No.
Okay, intubating.
No.
Okay. So you guys acknowledge this company, what the one area, maybe that we, for that, and another area.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just, I just want to be very clear, or help you about why.
I think that's, if it, if it, less safer than others, particularly from a design standpoint, we can have a conversation. And I, I, well, we'll get this day to discuss, on how it was used to be. Installed, precisely, where it was today.
It sounds to me real quite, but, um, if there is, or.
You're going to make this relationship.
Their, 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 vinyl versus stone, versus brick, versus metal, felt to me like half of your. That's what I did after.
Yeah.
It sounds like, okay, this, so.
One, right.
Okay.
Is that, is that the name of the study? Third party rating. Yeah. Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah. So. Good.
Well, it's not like you, you promise that if we have additional work, you can do that. Yeah. And then you. Anything else? I don't. Anything?
I got a, any official.
Okay.
Other than. We can work, we can serve elevation on the slab and you know, find from that. From that.
Hmm, correct. Now, um. Our, our houses that are gonna be visible from. Higher. In the back.
Um. There are houses that have weird elevation to face higher. At some point in the.
That's.
Are you, they're just buffed. We're doing the. Doing them now. Yes.
So if, let's say, the commitment is, as it turns out, if they want to have clarification on the buffer amount. Cause you know, I've done a pipe and, and you see vinyls great. That. And I know that that wasn't the initial conception, but how tall was the mound and what were, what were the plans? Some were just visualists, you know, but some were not. So I would imagine that.
There's, there's a combination of everything is true on there who would match. What's off the street, what's that proven up or parallel to that. Matches on both sides. I suppose a high level of accuracy, you know, pretty good number. That's a functional, no give it, vinyl engineer depending on when we can start to make this boat. But they're more than that. Um.
Is, is your final vision?
So I'm tempted to try to block the backs.
That would be a final development and detail we could have. Multiple. Engineering information, elevation, set, understanding what the elevations actually are. Who made sure of that? And with random guts, the translation as well.
I must be, um, questioning that. Uh. I am questioning whether or not you can commit to the backs. Mostly being covered by the mound and is even, or if what I'm hearing is that maybe is. Can't.
I have. Have what for? How much throughout the year is that covered? Uh, they want, no way to begin streaming the backs of those ones. It just doesn't happen that way.
So the intention is to not necessarily cover the backs of the walls, which is what we are.
The intention is to provide a least state that will grow. And provide. Predominantly provide coverage for those zones that will grow into that in the future.
That's a good clear prediction. And so as you're driving along, I, what do you envision people will see as you drive down, how do you look at the condition without going into it?
I think you're. A similar. Need a wire straight back. So you have houses that back further off. Uh.
Are you looking at the opposite side of your?
The east side. Um, there's a, there's a.
Oh, okay.
Um, there's an.
Yes.
No, that's.
Oh, look. Yes.
I mean, our intent is to landscape that well. When you're driving by, you're not. And because of the setback as far as it is, you're gonna be seeing. Top vehicles off the back.
Yeah.
It's a. Trying to reach in their vision or in any of their back yard.
There's the great wall step back. Nice. Is natural. Natural.
Um, yeah. What was that, what was that setback?
Like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which really helps. So that I, I, we do not wanna do what they did next toward us. I just think that. Where they.
Yeah. That's a good example.
Yeah. Um. And I'm, I'm not a wedding planist at all plus, but it looks. And having a walking path between the, okay, be, be a little one space. Uh. But yeah, we wanna do a landscape in the, the mixture, but we do want a lot of. But we do know we got a hundred and thirty, which is way more than anybody else.
And trust me, I'm driving. To the. I think it's. We have two, two walls that is. Or a. We need to. That landscape is line along higher road.
Yeah. Elevation is the issue, cause I can really tell.
And my best, my ability to. Give further detail on that.
That's fair. Your intention is to have them.
Yeah, yes. It's in the.
You'd say ten meters.
I would say ten. With your four. Yeah. You're. How much? Uh, limited.
Yeah. Right? You gotta, you're gonna step that.
Yeah.
And that's nice. You know? I'm just wanting to get out.
Coalition laws. For that, now, now you see, I'm not. Free file. Probably. Very. Give it. I'm not.
You stated that. Under, understood.
Third. Yeah.
Okay. Let's, uh, move along. Uh, I, I appreciate. If I've been. Bigger, I appreciated the driving. Man, well, this is a small episode. And the, um. Sorry, I just lost my voice. The, oh, head walls and walls and that's. That's great.
Uh, just. A hundred.
Yeah. I saw that. Do you have any? Okay. All right. Um.
I can move on with the, the pretty. Are they to do this?
Yes.
Um, so if you want to go to dependence, I would call it dependence one is the updated. Um. That is basically our account for the number of units approved in twenty sixteen, the amount of total space approved in twenty sixteen. The layouts or the site banks for arrowhead and top side. It shows me the current layout that we consider to be worse. And then what it does is it shows west of the. What we take that to your layout. Um, our best guess tonight.
Ron, that's one of the things listed. Like. Show everything. And when you. I look at this, man, it's like. Thirty-five percent of the case everybody being, um, saying. We are. Twelve hundred forty dollars we're getting through for, we're losing fifty-six, right? So you can.
Man.
For man. And another fifteen. That are, we are not paying any. Um.
Can you elaborate on your, your?
Yeah. Because when, when we look at the, these plans. And then we look at our simplification plan where we said, hey, we could put lots of this magnitude, this magnitude in. But I'm, let's say, let's sign. We, we looked at that and started and said, okay, well. What function, like we well, we said, we can't cram it all in. And we got this quick, we had a couple. So when we look at that, we really have streets for the final help and whole. Um, we cannot maintain very large secondary space and everything else we committed to. We, we can't put it out there constantly there. And so we're losing. We're decreasing the density, um, that nothing blocks from this area over there trying to. And I would tell you the same thing that we're finding out in this submission. When we originally submitted, we had a hundred ninety-three years on the month. We, we got underpaid three now. So we're now in a. We can't. We're, we can't put any more lots on us. That's, that's what we're known for, that's what fits maintaining the green space. Um. And I would say when we get ready on the rest side, we are very sure to. That you'll see, you'll see less that's over there because we're probably gonna do, there's four hundred and fifty lots on there. Or whatever the number is. We're gonna do two or three different types of projects that against, so they're not all gonna be the way to be labeled after. So. Anyway, I, I can be glad we, we are down to fifteen lots for sure. We're not leaving any.
I'm extremely happy about that. And I think that was what my intention was, was calling out the green space in my questions. Was I didn't understand how you could preserve the green space while keeping all those lots and.
Right. And then when you look at the simplification plan, what size lots we wanted there, and then you start thinking about. Reality. Where we are five years, you know, you can see. So, um, we worked very. The arch experience, these garage doors. Being flush with the door, a majority of common. And I wanna say thank you to Bill because they had designed, um. And look at some great product now to bring on that they didn't have. To this level before. And we've got that to show you in a second, but I did wanna. Man, this is the plan.
So it's, it's a. Total.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, this. Yeah. Yeah.
I, I really think fifteen lots in the fifty sixteen. But I think.
Continue to go around for the green space on the outside. So, you know, I say.
Right. I, I appreciate that thought from you. And I think that that was what was missing in our last conversation was not really able to see. You know, look at a tree, look at a tree. See the forest. All right. Continuing on.
Uh, listen, you want to dependents to the. The plan that was approved in twenty sixteen. So, you know, the numbers match. The site. What. Uh, what was originally talked about to street at first. But that's what we did in twenty sixteen. And then dependence three is the developer's vision plan. For the Evans, the entire of the. Um, so you can see how that evolved. Back in twenty sixteen, what, what might be today in the future in both categories. Um. You.
Yeah.
Um. What we did is take those fifteen lots, is that for your opinion?
No. Carry us down.
What we did, what we did is to get rid of them and to make sure these mats. Sort of type of secondary space and everything worked out. What we did is just put them up. So on your plan. With the. I'll show you this.
Touchstone.
So.
This is the.
This is the new plan. So we just made. The fifteen plus we added teams that are seventy-one miles. And they're. So those fifteen lots down here is.
Oh.
To make sure the capital still.
So are you in that area that's being at next to the city? Are you, are you envisioning that they want things up there?
They're. You got, they're.
Oh, they're.
They're doing the. And they're doing new classes.
And, uh.
They're doing classes, there's a hundred. I think, I don't, they're still, I haven't gone through zone yet, just waiting for mid September. But we are putting the fifteen lots. I just.
No.
Or while there's twelve.
Not really. Losing lots.
Oh, yeah.
No, they're, they're still there in the plant that they've been having to the annex area.
Well, we could take that, we could take it annex area off. And we're.
Is the annex area longer in part of it?
No, I'm saying from the twelve forty.
Yeah.
It's gone. We're losing for fifteen lots less down below. So we're fifty-six lots. In the plan. With it. You know?
Yeah. It's just.
Until today. You know?
Well, it, what is? Let me just do. For fifty-six.
On the north.
No.
Yeah. And it's.
Where's nobody?
I, I understand what's being said.
Okay.
It doesn't allow to.
Or fifteen.
Whole production or Evans farm stuff.
It, it's not.
Uh, no, I think I understand. Okay. Moving on. So we got the original one, we got the. We have resolved a number of issues that I think were brought up in the last occasion. Um. Can you talk a little bit, uh? Didn't you, do you have any questions that you wanted to ask?
I got.
Okay. Okay. Um. For the. For the sidewalks and you mentioned one was gonna be eight, almost fifty-five. And there, there'll be the, um, multi-use capital side of them.
Oh, yeah.
And that would be eight, was it? Or was it? For some reason that I, I was eight, but I still didn't understand, but I just wanted to hear like, uh. Okay. If it's. No issue, I just. Wanted to know if there's a longer to issue. Okay. Great. And that would be one kind of that we create this. Um, yeah, stay around this.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you have a lot of issues that you wanted to address more?
Okay. So. The. Those. Uh, we're not, I don't know. Along the. We, you know, your paths are running that way. We ran that. What we, where we thought that had sense was pushing up to the street. To create connectivity between the parks and the wrong network, then the, the others. But what, it's more of a general. The plan is a little bit, there isn't a lot. Green space. You have, you have. Center of space. You have the. Shop that. It is a little bit kind of. That is usable, like if you want to play. Something. But, you know, there's no way to. But that's. The shop already wasn't. And for. This walkie is gonna be the most high walk drill. Uh, I think. Small drill. A lot of. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because. They're usable. I, I think the mind is that this one. And when you look at the. These are the. There's a destination. But those are. Our other locations. Elsewhere. That's me. Those are two questions. Now here we have one. Will we have a lot of, we can see eight rounds. The new car. That we're doing. Over. And that side is all verification. That's. And up to the. We'll lose. There's a whole. And. We have. We have a lot. Yeah, we. Yeah. We got a shore, we got a top lock, we got fire. Um. And I just wonder. The first time that we brought in. I, I, I think the. That was. A hundred. Uh, we. The. In destination. Then one other. And that's what we heard is that plan.
That you were option, but not all the original preliminary plans approved.
Right.
I think.
And I think. If I may. Look at the original.
Yeah.
Um. If you. If you squint the concept there. But.
I squint.
Obviously, I'm more trying to say it's, uh, there's a park, there's a park.
Classics tonight.
There's a, there's a park here.
Mm-hmm.
There's a freeway that connects this. There's a freeway that connects here to a park. There's green space along the thoroughfare. There's green space along.
Well, wait, I thought this was. In the middle.
Yeah. It. Again, we're. This. To. Given what we have today. So. Like I said, we use. Um. The roadmap. What we amount in the general location of those connected elements there.
You got that?
Yes. I think. Twenty-five seventy-two might be.
Okay.
So. Why would you? Why was it? So sure. For this area. And sure that's. Access. Really. Most of. Um, unfortunately, that wasn't. That was the intention was to engage here. To kind of. Um. And on the flip side of that, personally, you provided access points to the higher reading areas. So they. With this way. If you go. For the.
I want. I want, how much room between? Right?
Yeah. Oh, this is. This is. Not a lot of growth.
Right. Well, that's.
So what, I'm good with that. There's a lot of green space here, but it's not usable.
Other than walking around.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
So. These lots here. Or. Or we got. Yeah, I think that, I think that's part of that. Um. The. Most of the. The. Get you to. Their hard destination. And the, the. Registration activities left here are. Right at the backyard. Registration activity. Location. As well. I. So. And I, I approach it. Space. The world changes. In the lot. Sure. That's what's especially. And I don't think it has. I look at it as a different type of space. Um, I say that all the time. Different sizes, different quality, different characters. Your current. That's what place could. I mean, that's why I said. All this. Most ways, not just. You try to build that all. The. Basically. I'm not. But.
I agree with that. What you just said.
We're gonna challenge.
Well. You said thirty-five percent of the green space there would be anonymous.
It was all same.
If it was all same. But you could still have it either have variation, right? Within his.
Yeah. Which we did. Then I would, I would, I would say. We have. We do have. We have some natural area. We have very. Formal. And those all work within that, uh, destination.
Okay.
This year. You. Don't probably, probably walkie. Along the lane and, you know, saving lives and.
Well, I actually, I, I like on being a buffer for the. I actually.
Yeah. And we're. At least three people are still gonna walk around.
Yeah.
We. Where do you know? I think, I think what, where. Where we got. We started. Language of destination.
Yeah.
When you look at. We exist. What?
There you go. Okay, uh, street lighting. Uh, lighting on property. Uh. So there's the downward facing light from the garage that the builders are gonna have. The builder committed to having no light go beyond. Their property. Does that make sense? That, that's, that's true of our group right now, but I think what is a unique challenge for you all is a builder on a smaller plot is that. What if lighting goes in? As we call it, lighting on the other wall. Right? So. When you guys are talking about the light bulbs in here, I wanna be sure that part of what you envisioned was that. Down facing lighting from the garage would not go on to any other property than in the driveway. Does that much make sense? I mean, I, I didn't. As can answer. The, the, the wattage. Just very preliminarily looked it up. Looks me like that. Made a power light for down. But would actually be a problem on the smaller.
A lot of. It's not such a lot of. It's the height of the. And the. How. Name it. And you know.
The. Ah, the. Lights. After the lights, the rod.
Metal.
That would be presented as. So it's not telling you route.
Right.
Like doing now. For, you know, access to the driveway.
Yeah, you got it. That's exactly what I envisioned. And so I love the wattage on that, the spread, based on the height of the garage, the wattage. It appears to be that it was going to go on to, in some cases, the other property unless the location of the lighting was positioned in such a way.
Wouldn't.
Yeah.
This is just a.
Yes, this is one of the.
A typical.
That's exactly what I was envisioning. And it's actually this light. So on the smaller flats, that's, um, thirty one feet, right?
Well, the product you're doing is.
Well, yeah, thank you. Um. The lighting location here is closer to the edge.
Okay, potentially.
Could potentially.
There's. I mean.
Exactly. You said.
Yeah, we commit to, you know, binding it.
In such a way that it's not, um, that it doesn't provide any location. Is that clear?
That's fair.
I think you have, Jesse is all gathered. You have the sentence already in the development text. But it only goes back to, um. Model, no, I wouldn't. All of your landing, your first three lines. And down. So that like cats are controlling.
That's exactly the order.
Good.
But it's, I believe it doesn't exist to me.
This is only the protection.
Yeah. Is that fair, Tom?
And we, I went through the section with regards to volume today. With engineers and Jesse from.
Yes, I've spoken with Jesse. You have chances where it starts lighting. Uh, can we see where it flows?
Oh, yeah, there, there's no question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I never.
So you get it.
My word, yeah, I never.
Because we're gonna get all my conscious residents complaining about the lighting launch.
Yeah.
That's. So we're gonna try to be sensitive to that and ensure that what we got from the Evans Farm is the way that the Berlin division.
Yeah.
And it meets our standards.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that's.
No, I appreciate that.
All right, so, um, anything else you have to resolve this evening?
I think we presented, most, mostly all the detailed changes made in the text. And if you, if you county or basic law or plans. Compared with, compared with the master plans. And I think that everything all in one. And that's your question. So, um. You give the letter to additional. We're. Um, I call. And. Like.
Yeah, and unless you need clarification on some of our. I do want to make sure.
I think we, we pretty much are on the models that are represented in pictures. It, it was that file setting on the front? That was provided as best as the specs.
Just a, is a three minute. Was it a change what actual material was? That's just showing. The, you guys look forward to our, uh, our sharing, our. So. We were a lot of focus, um, their plans are now addressed garage. Generally, a larger tenement being fresh.
Would it be, um, much between the conceptualize point now to reflect what you think is acceptable in. Especially with that natural, certain material along those whole properties itself?
It is.
Would you guys.
Yeah. There's the. It wasn't the color rendering, it was, you know, appearance of the material facing the stuff. Let me go to. The three.
I think that's the. We'll consider.
Those would be like. Um, if, uh, so we can get. These are individuals that are running the same.
They're in this, they're in the. The.
Or names?
No, those, those ones.
Oh, those are the street skate.
There's the street skate one that you have.
How it's street skate.
Vinyl.
Is they. Through the models and adding to that screen for the next.
Okay.
And then it was a. What the.
It doesn't, um, just your. Correct. Uh, my concern is that it, it appears that some of those renderings reflect vinyl being used on the front side of the facade.
Yeah.
It's not really helpful if we are, are able to showcase. What the actual material is that we would provide.
A lot of.
Yes, exactly. On that, and you say this, using this kind of material on the truck base in the saddle, right? Cause that way, as you look at it, it's supposed to not reflect what appears to be by the side.
Yeah. This is a viable.
No, and there's no reason to buy. This was, this is, these picture renderings have led to confusion about what actually had been approved and what actually was. And even I, oh, it's just what the tax says, right? So. But I would rather have, you're going to have a picture in there, an accurate concept than an inaccurate concept.
So.
That doesn't align with the done reacts. Does that make sense to get out that?
You should call it a typical because.
Yeah.
Yeah. A typical elevation. These elements of. Front elevation. We just, um, period.
And it was show like the picture. Right, on the front, and it was show that. And then that way, what gets reflected in the picture that's provided in the, it matches with the text.
The individual.
Yes. Exactly, yeah. But it would be known that individual player cannot choose vinyl on front.
Right.
Right? So that the rendering of the fixtures seem to suggest that maybe they could. And I just wanted to make certain other lines really in what we see.
Yeah, I kind of just kind of, so I just.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't. Of all of the elevations, this reference, we got the, the standard typical.
Yeah.
Elevation, each element of our, every element of the elevation of the final station.
Correct.
Is lined by a combination of either brickstone or, or natural material.
Yes, correct. Yeah.
Yeah, we should do that.
That better. Okay, um. So I think we still need to resolve the issue with the vinyl. I appreciate that there's an elevation. All right. What do you think about the analysis portion of the story?
There's one. Um, it's sort of. With this. Um, the only. Sort of. You started off with a different product. And we got a new product, that's great. And I think this applies to both. We must be able to do a different. Well, then that. It was all there that, that we stepped over. And maybe there comes in there. And this motivation for this person. The original wire has evolved this one. Not necessarily strong, but it's written, I have had this experience. Or this. This didn't get lost. And this carries.
I don't, I believe that everything on here in your class, strictly that sixty three acres coming out of here, so. And I believe, I believe this one, okay. I don't, so I don't, that's not that. I just said, I don't want. Take this. Sort of like this. Those are the type of laws you. Quiet at this. Those are your exhibits, don't, you know. I, and I think that's a wrong. Just where we start.
Yeah, that's what we're, uh, here.
I think saying the previous section is that smart arrow networks, that those are in effect, as they can approve around the tax.
Yeah, changes that you are representing to other spaces regarding the lots and green space, those all apply to the spaces now. It's not only respective to this parcel. When we amend, if we were to approve an amendment to this, that amendment will be, um, for the.
I think that's.
Not necessarily. Well, then why would we have a redistribution? So we say, okay, you're taking away green space, there's going to be lots. But we're gonna move it to the other side of the railroad track, right? So now those lots are slated for a completely different parcel. And this plan was approved. This plan was approved as a tool, not as a parcel by the person. Is that right? Right. So if we amend the tax and we say, these lots that were over here are now going to be on some parcel over there. Those lots belong to that parcel over.
Well, but we're not. Yeah, right? I mean, we're not requiring that or binding that. Where are they making, right, and correct. Where are they making of lots that are prepared to be commissioned here is a question for a later debate. And they are making. At that point, they. Right?
Right.
To me, they're sitting. A cloud. They're sitting, they're sitting here. Maybe they. Other day, maybe they.
If they tried to put those, those spots in another area that wasn't committed to. Because they've committed to put those spots somewhere else. And that's what we have in this, if they have the lot count, they have the committed. So that means nothing right now. Is that what you're saying? And they can print it over here or there.
Just. You know, plan is incorporated. Well, this is interpretation. This last. This is the original plan and everything. It's just that there's. Special for a. It got. We're not. And I don't want to throw it all out. And when we go. This is.
But, but the question to me is, is the new plan only this parcel? Or is it a new plan for the amendment which, which the original amendment covered all of them?
Mm hmm. I think our. And I'm not saying it's. The way we have it pasted it, we have assumed we would be able to work this. These amendments all apply to sixty three acres from portals. And we applied, we applied that appendix. As a good thing, that's to show you until other time, we can somehow incorporate that into.
Some of the things.
I agree. What was applied for was this. I mean, it's like. Right, and that comment was even smaller than it. Come in at the back stage, a piece of it. From here, you're gonna. To me, that's a really, just on a bigger scale, right? Creating a single development back in with a thing with. Number of agents, we were only doing. And we could, in the board revolution. And when that comes, I would like to, like we said, say, anything that doesn't, that doesn't specifically address the. Relate to the more development, any changes where we're going to have no. We could nullify. If there's any. Action. Changes now. We could, we could.
That was all. That was all.
Okay.
Do you wanna add comment to see?
No, no. That's what you do on that. But it.
Okay, so, um. So some of this, and to me. Does not apply to more specific parcels, but relates to broader evidence forms of this test. Do we want to?
Can I maybe? Respond to that?
Yeah, sure.
So we provide the higher evidence. Context. To show you what has been approved or adopted. And in some new subsections specific to North Standard within that trade complex. And we shot all of the changes within the North Sub area.
That would only apply to.
That would apply on this system creators. Also.
With everything else that's. Generally, yes. You know, and I think everybody, we just did one place a little bit. And we even, and did another. That we, we gave it to, we gave that on the area two. Loaded. The rock of the year. Again. Trying to give you guys one of the things to look at. I understand. What I'm quite concerned with is, it should be the same concern you. Let's, let's just take all of them. Because the whole. Forever's farm. School office, you got the one for this. Then you got the. The. College Association. If this is the one corner, the College Association for the area chair. I don't want to keep you just on the way. We're on our own. We're gonna answer because this is what this plan calls for. Because the original. And what I'm saying is, is we started out with. And maybe I'm not that covered, but this might here. So I'm not, I'm. And specific with the H U A, we, we brought that as a pulse on every property in Evans Farm. Regardless of which standard of nature will be run and sold. By the next surveillance car association we started. With the next, that's a little. But if it, if it isn't. There were, yeah, there's no. Yeah. There's enough. Well, the problem we have is all. And that's what I'm saying, we track. Yeah. The whole of this, we started with this, this was gathered. Big time. And this is more of your. Yeah, but that's. The Russell was, was still there. Yes. And you're correct. Uh, I think you're, you said it, you're correct. It would be original. And that's what we encapsulated in this. And look, we, we really worked the original table, everything here. Uh, we really did. Of all of this. Is we all. Common use, change. And all kinds of. And, and it's very, 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 you know, that, that. Way. Real true. You can say that about me. Swear. No, you, you, you. You've. The old.
Well, and what I did enjoy today was, well, showing you to me, I think you're frequently more comfortable than the last. This for. And. Changes. Cause I would. Yeah, I mean, they're just more, like, more of their regulation as anything that has. That, that, right? Cause they don't, they don't. Will follow the more convenient. But we're all more checks which are on my screen. They are. And then anything that's. Oh. So. That. Places that need to go looking at zoning. It got that.
Well. So, okay, like this example. Of a divergence, did, did Berlin prove this divergence, lighting and radiation in areas is permitted? This includes security and protected carriage as well as selected all field lighting where you can use. All lighting being integrated, should be turned off later. And I heard you can hold the time, send it versus coming here home at time, Fridays and Saturdays. Did Berlin pass that? Originally.
Actually bring it up, yeah.
Because I know that that was passed before.
Yeah, we, we.
And you guys envisioned the same thing.
Everything that was ever, it was a seamless unit that was formed. So that's why it ended up, well, incorporating as the exact effect. It was a garden on the lighting standpoint. We did the candlelight down, our sky, and down to other people's property, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, yeah, the. But next to all that. It was. It was, you know. We got, oh, we got some cash. Yeah. So what, so you did affirm that, but what is about that? That you just read is, is you just asked. Is the.[1778.71]
Well, the reason I'm saying that we often like to highlight city fifty feet in height. Uh, I know that this was passed for orange. So what the kind of thing is, obviously it has been twenty sixteen Berlin too. But as I mentioned, there were differences between the orange text and the Berlin text initially in the Evans Farms components. And some of them are rather significant, including lighting.
Yeah, I think you weren't allowed higher lighting, but still allowed the darks or made. But I remember it's been on your agreement, we lighting displaced whatever.
Right.
All those law.
We had different standards, so.
So you're, you're assessed it.
And orange is allowing B?
Seventy, whatever, yes, whatever, no, they're telling us that.
And then orange didn't have required the downwind facing lighting of the hall.
Oh, yeah, the candle, the candlelight dispersals on other people's property can. And those, yes, you can see it, just like I can, I can see them. I can, I can see the ice light, but those.
Yeah, probably.
Well, but, but those, I don't know if the ice light spread like a lot of people's property.
They do, but we can't regulate it because it's a school. But then it's not compliant with the resident.
It is, oh, okay. Well, they, um, as far as more should come down to candlelight, yes.
We could.
Well, we might be at least able to have a conversation.
That is probably the.
You're, you're, for the government, for the jurisdictions, we go substantially comply with the law. However, in a regard with my corporation, say, we should have a conversation. Can I take this to an eye? Yeah. Will you come? You know, let's have a.
Let's have a conversation. You know. This thing does not apply to private entities, right? Throughout, it's not different entities. Um, okay. So, uh, we say that we had one potential to pass, which is, well, for now, until we have more information.
So, so, um, we could, we could ask for an approval or a vote tonight based on the fact that it would be this, um, getting study that showed you.
No, I would need to ask, need that information to be advanced before I did unconditional approvals. I don't think that, you know, then it becomes an interpretation more as serious objective. I would like to see the data information first before. And I, to be fair, I did ask, I know it was confusion, but I'm not trying to delay it anymore yet. But I, I do feel that this fair question has, I'm not necessarily getting material. I've requested, so. Uh, I don't. Trust me, board.
Do you have, let me just, you have, you have, she's, you know, we can, it's sort of a, a, a building first, uh, attached. We, we just.
Yeah. Yeah.
Me, I'm, we saw. Uh, is it?
So.
Jen, do you have any, uh, is it wrong? Maybe it's, do you have any, is it wrong for this one?
I haven't.
Okay. It would be very less, yeah. Would be very, you know, online, possible. Possible, yeah, I have two, three, four, five. Well, we know it's like fifteen, right? We can start, are you, uh, you do, I mean. So yeah, I think this is. Jen, do you have the box of this copy of what was produced for tonight?
Well, I don't know.
I don't know.
Oh.
I'm sitting here with that.
I know, but like, it was, you would be what we use for the official. Right? Your copy. So, and that, did you see this?
I don't know.
Oh, well.
Uh, just. Want to.
All evidence in the farm's information is not in the project, it's on the zone.
That's the original, I mean, that's, this is the, the new stuff that they introduced on.
My, I've not ever seen it.
You want to look back with your office, basically, back there?
My, I think you're sorry.
Yeah. We, but.
I don't know. Second, what's the video? Oh. What do you do? What do you? Oh, I'm just trying to, you just. I think that's how we, you know, what he said. You know, so. Yeah. I wonder what, I wonder what. Ever.
It was. Was, uh, this.
Yes.
Yeah. Or maybe it's.
That's it.
Yeah. Yeah. So we have four, we're gonna have, um. Yeah. Another letter. Another letter, and let's do. Yeah, okay. Call the media director. Okay, so, um, we're gonna examine these documents that's specific. And we're standing right now with the issue we're.
Just.
Yeah.
We're trying to be like. These are.
I, I think as gentlemen actually mentioned, there's, there's something, some things to reference to assure our residents that the vinyl that you're selecting is at safe. And perhaps, uh, to Mr. Perkins, it'd be even safer than National Security. So I look for that.
Well, look, I mean, I got. Yeah.
But I do want evidence of that, because that's a safety concern. To me, as a trustee today, with the experiences that we have had in our childhood, right? That's, that's the current state, and so.
Well, what we do, just to make sure, uh, okay, we know the many factors, how it's applied, and whether with a hundred sixty mile an hour wind. Um, then we'll have to look at, just to give you some of our, uh, when, when the fair, if you got wind, and, and apparently your final were, uh, not in their houses. But when were they done? They, so.
I think they can cause it to happen.
Okay.
That's what I'm, we don't, we don't pretend that.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's, there's to be something that you have seen. That you can point us in a direction, hey, I saw this somewhere. You can.
I think that was everything produced sufficient for, I hope, answering the question.
It's supposed to be a perfect, but there is production where, not, and not, they try to work, they try to eat, but in general, that natural materials, that all is safe, we got five of them. Given its ability to, hey, it's, it's all, given its ability to go airborne. That's what it's being, that's what it's drawn to. Can we, I think that is, what can we look at to say? No one of those can let us stay in that in the other, and or viable disaster, and or viable.
Anything, just, anything with. Different.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But how is it breaking through that? That's what I'm, I've acknowledged it, I can do. And then my zoning, right? Whereas just to show you, you know, all of it, yeah.
That. That is not, it's not, or.
It's not.
No, it's not. The zoning has not, you're, it's not, yeah. Because this is more proof that it's not material background content. Then it's. The regular, it's not. But the, the, I think what Jen was asking for is. Give us. And in particular, we have.
And just, and maybe that people's closing, more flexible because of the chain link material. From the original P C text. The way.
Yeah. Representing. He's on.
I know.
Not for the next, right? I don't know.
Yeah.
Study background, not here.
Yep.
Here it is. I heard you, I heard you. Who do they? That's all, I'm gonna say, yeah.
Sure. You are.
Conflict interest. Okay, so what do we have? Wait a moment. We have, uh, four exhibits to accept. And we will start these exhibits at eleven. So a cover letter that we will call exhibit eleven. I have. What else do I have? What is this? And then you call it one of two, there's some other. Okay, I have modified in terms of text, book, booklet one, two, as exhibit twelve. Name it, like, label it as twelve. Yeah. We have modified in terms of text, and then it's part of O two, O two exhibit first. And then we have. Again, maybe the cover. Six, those eleven. And then we have the additional project to, to Evans Farm. Norris Evans Farm to the. Move except the, uh, exhibit eleven, report in with a letter making precedence over the former. Move chair secretor's holder in possession. Please go. Yes. Okay, so is the applicant's, uh, request, and it's time to continue this session, or how would the applicant like to proceed?
So, if we, we said, chin, what we have been.
Yes.
And that ain't specific, um, how would you, you know, the patient, or the long term for the five.
We can do, as to, and, um, start second, potentially, maybe there are a small amount of things we have. Eight o'clock on the twenty second, is that quick? And then deliver anything for new, uh, others for that? Okay. So there's a decent. Okay. And eight o'clock in the second. Okay. Uh, move the reset to continue hearing C C K with two dash one, three, eight, nine, place September twenty second at P M, located at two seven one, check here. Right, at the. Maybe. Okay. Uh, move the chair second, let's move forward. Session. So. Yes.
Right.
Okay. And please hear the job you know earlier.
Yeah. And we're on your, we're really prepared.
Close it. Thanks. Okay. Now we're tuned into regular session. We have, uh, just a few opening items to cover. Um, one is social media outreach strategy. If you'd like to hold that to find to. As unless there's something urgent, I need to address. Okay. Uh, President, the clerk, he has already completed. Uh, usual agreement. Uh, let's hold that on to October eighth. Yeah. Sorry. And then, so just the whole, just the whole.
Oh.
So. Okay. Move your box with five, four, four, name it three, three, zero, two, three, three, zero, four, four. David. David, twenty five, two, million, twenty eight, four, O, two, point three eight. Move that. For the discussion. Please go. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any other business? Future meetings, we have, uh, Turkey trails on Wednesday and the new trail, we did, um, Shashul Africa, all the way down to Midway in Africa. Created in the woods by combo, presenting on, on that new trail. I believe it will be, um, uh, ribbon, so this will be around March or February of, uh, October. We have first C C T A. And that's all.
I have four, six, and then.
And then this.
Uh, you, you should.
Excellent. Oh, yes. Uh, and that. That's great. I don't know if I accept it or not. Do you know? I. Oh. Twenty percent?
Yeah, we're, we're still waiting on a meeting for you.
What's your?
Yeah, we have.
In my. Okay. Great, and the other meeting. Hey, any other questions?
I have, okay, I'm glad of you. Um, first is a short note about the topic, if not, you can tell I'm not. The first one is for, well, we've been to, uh, do the bill, had to.
Move for revolution, O nine, dash, O three, in the amount of four. Move to your proposition, O nine, dash, O three, and the amount of, four, seventy, two, ninety, for purposes. Move, I just, please go.
Yes, this is one, which, which, we got, it's almost, for, for.
Move to, C, O nine, dash, O one, not of five, 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 two, um, nine, eight, versus. One, question, three, so, that, in, and, 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 and. And, move, uh, the chairs, and, 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 please go. Please go. Yes.
Jen, um, you will be able to tell me how just like, on the version Johnson.
Uh, I mean, any other.
Thank you.
We still have those, yeah.
Sorry, I just, I don't know, but it is. How much, how do you purchase in Johnson?
Oh. Yeah, I, I, I. So.
That's, that's, that's.
Yes. No. Clients, very.
You, you.
We're not here, well. Here, uh, we're ready. This thing, I, I just. I have money, money, unless you want her, I don't know, so that's.